All right, let's go ahead and call the order, please. So first order of business for tonight will be the approval of the minutes from the special board meeting.
This is Amy. I approve the minutes from, or I motion to approve the minutes for the special board.
All right, thanks, ladies. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, we have supporter updates. So we'll start off with the PTO.
So I received a report from Candace Williams, who's our high school PTO president, and they've apologized for not being able to join us this evening, but they have already done some great things to kick off the year. The PTO was pleased to provide a welcome back luncheon for faculty and staff across all campuses. Everyone was provided with a favor made by one of our awesome parents. Ms. Jamil was awesome. She did a great job. We had a great volunteer participation from the high school students and look forward to continuing to engage with them. We also had a parent volunteer support, which was so important. We have quite a few open positions on the PTO board we are working to fill. Due to the drastic drop in the lunch program revenue, we were not able to provide staff allotments this year. They do, however, plan to approve some funding requests for high impact items. And I just want to thank the PTO and additionally, the board members who were able to join us for the back to school luncheon. It was great and it was an awesome opportunity for our staff to get together and fellowship.
All right, so as a side note, I thought the luncheon was fun as well. Very nicely done by the PTO. All right, next up, we have athletic boosters. Mr. Schlegel.
Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. As you walked in, we had a football scrimmage that got canceled last night, so we were able to reschedule for tonight. So they're out there doing a joint practice with Pine Lake Prep. All of our high school sports are up and running. Their first meets or matches or games all start next week. And middle school sports will start trials on Monday. Besides middle school football, which started this past Monday, they will have their first game next Wednesday at home versus CSD. Things are going well. It's nice to be back to normal, get middle school sports back. Indoors, we're going to continue to wear the mask unless you're actually actively participating. If you're a fan, a coach, or a player sitting on the bench, they will be wearing masks. But if they're actively participating, they're allowed to remove their mask. Outside, we have no limitations. We're just going to keep what we did last year as far as trying to social distance as much as we can and clean our equipment as much as we can as well. As far as the boosters, we had some new members. We had a meeting last Monday. It went great. We got some new members joining the board. We have a couple rolling off. We are going to be rolling out Ticket Spigot. It's a new online app that our whole conference for high school will be using. Most of our schools and our conferences are actually going cashless. The only way to get into events will be through buying a digital ticket. We are not going to jump into that right away, but that is something we're going to look at doing over the next couple of months. We feel that taking cash out of volunteers' hands and going to more the the digital era, especially since our conference is doing that, is going to be an awesome opportunity for us. So you'll you'll hear more about that in the coming weeks. We're going to get some Blackboard Connect out, social media, and also have our coaches communicate that. So we're we're excited to have that coming out here pretty soon. Other than that, I'm just excited to get going.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Schlegel. All right, next up, we have the school state reports.
So the only, before I jump into the first day of school, I just want to let the board know that at this point, we are still waiting for a state budget. And so that is the big sort of elephant in the room. We keep waiting and watching and talking to those folks in Raleigh, and we're expecting to get some more information. So maybe in September, we'll be able to at least talk about where the draft is. But from where the legislature is to where I think the governor is going to want to be is is quite a bit of distance. So we may be in a situation like we have been in the past where they give mini budgets as we go along, and that that's a little bit difficult for us to plan for. So Haley does a great job of being forward thinking and then responding afterwards. But just to give you guys an idea of that, that is probably a little ways off just yet. In regards to the first day of school, it is so great to have all the kids back. You know, if I could make carpool run like it does right from the get go, that would the only thing that would make it better. And it wasn't, you know, it's just people finding their rhythm and getting used to what that is and setting up their carpools and maybe not being 900,000 degrees out while we're doing it. That, but other than that, the the kids were great. I saw the effort that both the teachers and the administration put into a lot of thoughtfulness. We tried some new things that you're going to hear about from the building principals this year, and it just felt really good and like a very strong start. So I've asked the building principals to take the majority of this, so I'm going to ask that Mr. Smith starts us out. We'll go, Mr. Smith, and then we'll have Dr. Graham, and then we will end with the elementary school and then a little, a little treat that one of the teachers did. So, Mr. Smith?
All right, good evening, everybody. Good evening, board. Good evening, those that are viewing. First, I want to commend our class of 2025, because I believe we had a very successful inaugural freshman transition day yesterday. Our attendance was fantastic, and that goes to show, I think, our community putting the merit of how important it was that we'd given our class of 2025, our freshmen, an opportunity to be in the building with just being them, even it being a half day. So I think that, you know, just being able to see them come in as wide eyed freshmen, but being able to see them by the end of the day, feeling a little bit more comfortable, and then coming in this morning, feeling a lot more comfortable than maybe some of their peers, their older peers were. So I think that having the ability to have them go through their schedule and just the the support that our teachers provided, because that did require some quick action out of our teachers to be ready, because you know, you've got some teachers who they teach all freshmen and other teachers may have mixed grade levels. So it was definitely a collaborative effort. So huge amount of appreciation to our teachers for making that happen. And then today, as Mrs. Stein said, it was a, it was great to have all of our students back together in one location, seeing the the normal beginning of the early, I don't want to call it normal, but seeing that traditional excitement that students have on the first day of school that realistically, well, we didn't have that opportunity last year, even in our different environment. So it's just seeing a bunch of seniors in the parking lot before school, getting together and socializing, and seeing that it was, there was a sense of enthusiasm and excitement that I feel that we're going to be able to maintain as we go through. And, you know, by the end of the day, we were exhausted. A lot of us were sweaty, but we're looking forward to tomorrow. We're looking forward to a fantastic school year.
Thank you. I echo everything Mr. Smith said. Yesterday was great. Our class of 2029, they came in such a lively bunch of students, and the teachers really enjoyed them. And I think they felt some level of ownership as middle schoolers yesterday, just with having a full day with the school, with having the school to themselves. And so I think today, when they came in, they knew exactly where to go. So I, I'm just glad that we were able to do that for them this year, because, you know, the first day of school can be very stressful for students and anxiety, especially for our students who are transitioning from elementary to middle. I will say that our students did a phenomenal job today. No issues with the class. A lot of them did not know where to go. Power School decided to go down. They they took it down yesterday because we're not the big district schools, and so they were trying to make certain that they didn't have it down when the big, bigger districts or the larger districts opened school. And so this morning at 7:30, when we're trying to take attendance or get everything started, we did not have Power School. But our teachers were able to just transition really quickly and to think on the fly. And they came up and we were able to find out where these students actually belong. But they were trying to figure things out this morning as school started. But that went great. Transitions in the hallway went great. And so I was just really excited to have the opportunity to be with our students. And I need to shout out Mr. Maverty, because today, if he never got drilled and skilled and all that in carpool, this was the day. I don't know, in my history of being here at LNC, we have never had a carpool that lasted one hour and 35 minutes. But that happened today. And so for the parents who endured, picked my kid not working, for all that went hap, that happened today, I want to say to our teachers, who some of them just were just exhausted, hot, having all kind of physiological responses to this heat, they still were able to brave the weather and help make certain that each student was in their car before they left campus. So I need to shout out Mr. Maverty for his leadership in carpool his first day here on the job with carpool. And to all of those teachers who helped make that possible, I need to make certain that they understand we appreciate them for their hard work. So it was a great day. Thank you to all of you who have supported us, and we're looking for a great year.
So at the element, can you hear me? At the elementary school, the same sentiments. It was very exciting to have our first meet the teacher in our new building. Two years ago, the building opened in October, so we had meet the teacher in the modulators. Last year, we started remotely, so we had meet the teacher on the field. So this was our first year to open in our new building. And we had over 90% of our families come to meet the teacher, very successful yesterday. Just so you know, on board, no issues, concerns with our students and the masks. They understood why we needed to wear them. They were wearing them. No issues with our masks. And a very successful first day. The kids were excited. Ms. Lotso and I did grade level meetings with each grade to get to remind them what it's like to eat in the cafeteria again. And there were cheers from the kids about getting to eat in the cafeteria. It just felt so good, despite the masks, that everything felt back to normal. And our buckets were filled with what school's supposed to be about as administrators, as teachers, as students. So we have a video that Whitney Whitfield, our media specialist, she went around throughout the day and took little snippets of different parts of the first day of school. So versus me trying to convey the feeling, even though we're tired and sweaty and smelly, so stay on that side of the room from carpool. It was just the best day ever. It felt so good to be back together again. And I know many children are probably already asleep right now. So I don't know if there's anything else, Ms. Lotso, that you would want to add. Just a great, a great first day, and enjoy the video.
I just want to thank the administration for, you know, all the building principals and the assistant principals. They've done an immense amount of work to help support and get things prepared and get ready. And that's, you know, that's what we saw. The high schoolers were dancing like that when I saw them. You know, I'd like to tell you all the middle schoolers I saw in the cafeteria were eating their fruit, but I learned that little known secret, all the fruit that middle school parents send, not so much. So, but, you know, life's full of choices. That's, that's what I learned today. But but the kids were all in great spirits, and that was, that was great. So thank you to Ms. Whitfield, too, for for putting that together. And that's all we have.
So great. Love that. Thank you, everybody. I know it was a collective team effort today. So two things that I took away, one from the video, class of 2034, man, do I feel old. Two, it sounds like we need to invest in a pool or two on the campuses so that the teachers have a cooling off period afterwards. So we'll see if we can convince Sarah to add that into Elevate 2.0.
Look, she's smiling.
All right. Next up, we have a committee report. So we will start off with global diversity and inclusion.
So yes, good evening, everybody. As you can see, we have a new slide deck for this year. So I'm going to go ahead and start out with our members of the committee. So we've had a little bit of transition on our committee coming into this new year. So in terms of the leadership team, we still have myself and Shannon Stein, Mr. Marcus Punches, and Ms. Mary Ann Riegalsky. Our teacher development subcommittee is made up. The chairperson is Ms. Riegalsky. Our leadership team has changed just a little bit. And the newest member to our leadership team is Ms. Whitney Whitfield. And after seeing her amazing video, I can now add some other things that we can have her do for GDNI. So we are very excited to have her joining us from the elementary school. Returning, we have James Aubrey from the high school, Lori Hughes, and on our team of parent representatives, we have Natalie Brown and Allison Atwell. In terms of our student development subcommittee, the chairperson is Mr. Marcus Punches. And the leadership team is made up of Callie Blom from the elementary school, Ashley Lockhart from the middle school. We have new to our committee this year, Taylor Elkins, who will be coming from the high school. So we're very excited to have her joining us as well. And our, two of our students from the diversity council are Ernest and Tan May and Mr. Joe Hack as a parent representative. We still have the possibility of a couple more members coming on. We are having our first full committee meeting of the 2021, 2022 full year scheduled for the last weekend, August. But we're very excited about the new committee that we have so far and looking forward to getting together. So the committee's objectives are to give students the best chance for success in our current fast paced and increasingly integrated world. We must expose them to experiences and immerse them in situations that expand their awareness, appreciation, and understanding of cultures, languages, and traditions other than their own. And so our annual goals kind of are broad goals and fall into three categories. And these are goals that really run year round. And as I stated at our last board meeting, we had teachers that were doing training and also staff doing professional development through the summer. So really, we just don't run the school year. We run the full year, so August to July. Our first goal is to facilitate teacher and administration programming modules that create alignment and understanding of the LNC values of diversity and inclusion. And when we get to the next slide, when we talk about, you know, what's been done in, you know, August and what will be done in September, I've broken it down in reference to these goals. Goal two is to develop and deliver consistent, age appropriate student programming solutions that cultivate an awareness and understanding of diversity and inclusion. And goal number three is research and prioritize and adopt best best practices that foster and support a diverse schoolwide community. Next slide. And so as I said, you know, our full committee is not going to be meeting until the end of August, just because we have students and staff and teachers and parents and everybody, you know, starting back to school just recently. But we have been busy. And so the first thing I'd like to talk about for August is our achievements and upcoming activities. And under goal one, Ms. Mary Ann Riegalsky delivered the classroom strategies for equity and dialogue, implicit bias and intro to diversity training to teachers on August 2nd, 3rd, and 6th. And since she did such an amazing job creating the training for the school, I'd like for her to go ahead and share how that training worked and some of the feedback from the teachers in terms of how it impacted them and how they feel that this training for them can be beneficial to the students here at LNC.
Thank you. So we did on Monday, it was a little, it sounds a little bit backwards, but we did the implicit bias training on Monday for all the teachers who had already taken the introduction. And then the classroom strategies was on Tuesday, and that was open to everybody who had already taken implicit bias. So some people took training Monday and Tuesday. And then on Friday was the introduction for all new staff, and then some staff that were in the past not required to take the training, but the way that our administration kind of decided, like, everybody really needs to be involved. So we did that on Friday. So in total, it's about 100 people attended this week. Some of them were repeats between trainings one and two, but about 100 people came this week or last week. So that's pretty good turnout for the first week back to school. Feedback overall is, tends to be positive. The workshops are a very interactive format. There's a lot of discussion. It's really a lot about leading people into learning how to have conversations, how to recognize and become aware of their own personal biases, how these impact their relationships with students. And then the third one really focuses on strategies for how to bring these discussions into the classroom and help kids to have respectful conversations about topics that can start off fairly benign and then, you know, end up a little bit more complex. They really have to think critically and really have to learn how to communicate. So it's a lot about listening. It's a lot about speaking. It's a lot about respect. And our goal is really to just help our staff to develop the skills and the tools they need in order to help our students become more aware of the world that surrounds them and really to think about how their classroom reflects the students that they teach.
Thank you very much. And I did, I read through all of the responses from the teachers that Mary Ann had sent to us. And, you know, one of the key things that I noted was that their feedback, when they were asked, you know, which section do you think could really impact the students with the ability to have these dialogues? And so we're really looking forward to taking this training that has been presented and done by the the teachers and having that actively, you know, distributed into the classroom so this can be modeled. And also, you know, this is kind of the dialoguing differences that we talked about a couple of years ago, really in action. So thank you so much for creating the training. And so in terms of another one for goal one, which is really, you know, this, the teacher and administration development was that there, starting this year, there's going to be an individual growth plan, IGP, for teachers K through 12 that will include a schoolwide GDI, GDNI for this year. Under goal two, we talked briefly about the data collected from teachers on how the training will benefit the students. Goal two, again, refers to, you know, what are we doing in terms of programming for students? Also, in the high school, the diversity council application has been created. They have changed it up this year in the past for individuals to apply. It was a written essay. And this year, they're excited because they got created and they're going to have them create videos. So that is going to launch and be live on August 17th. And so I know the diversity council at the high school is really excited about that and the students that they hear that are eager to apply. Under goal three, which is really focused on, you know, research and and metrics and best practices, and the admin is currently researching local consulting companies to do unconscious bias training with the entire staff. So we see staff and administration engagement as well coming in the new year. And also, under goal three, the upcoming GDNI committee, along with the staff, is going to be looking at ways in which we can measure and assess GDNI at LNC. And so for September and upcoming activities under goal one, there's going to be another implicit bias training that will be done on September 16th. And under goal two, there will be a 30 minute drop everything and talk in the middle school, and it will focus around cultural awareness. And this will be an activity for the middle school students. All we have for you for August. Thank you very much to the GDNI team. And we're excited to meet as a full committee come the end of August.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ridgely. All right, next up, we have the Elevate 2.0 update. Who am I turning this over to? Sarah?
Hey, everybody. Can y'all hear me okay?
Good to go.
Yep, we're good. Awesome. All right. Matt's going to text me if I go out. I've got a lot of moving parts, but my technology hopefully is going to hold up. And this is going to be pretty quick. This isn't anything that you guys are going to be voting on, but getting ready to begin this school year and kicking off Elevate 2.0. I did want to have an opportunity, and Jared as well, to make the greater board aware of our plans for Elevate and kind of where we stand. And if we can go to that second slide, briefly, I want to share with you guys, because there are some new board members who haven't been around with the history. In 2019, sorry, in, in 2013, we abandoned our typical school fundraisers and we, in lieu of an annual giving campaign. So that was something that was was a decision that was made with intent because we felt like we were going to, you know, we were nickel and diming our parents, and we heard that. So basically, in the years of 2014 through 2018, in our annual fund, we have raised over $800,000, and we've accomplished a lot. And I think that's important to understand, especially for the board members who may be a little bit newer to the board and possibly who weren't even around as parents at that time. But we were able to make a lot of upgrades to LNC that without Invest in Excellence, we wouldn't have been able to do. And some examples of that are things like the athletic playing fields at our elementary school campus that our sports teams uses all of the time. It is sitting in on the media center behind you, the the production room, the green room, if you will, and the digital citizenship classroom. It is at the high school with our student union. And it's another example, the high school has increased security with building our vestibule. We've, we've bought three school buses, and the list goes on. So these are really things that we've been able to do with parent partnership. And having the success with that and building up sort of our credibility, I think, with our parents, we decided in 2017 to kick off Rise Together. And with that, we, our target goal was $1 million for less than 300 families at our elementary school in order to build our new LNCES. And we were beyond successful with that. We, we exceeded our goal as a matter of fact and got pledges of about 1.1 million. And to date, we are over $1 million in cash in hand. And that's very remarkable, because typically, 90% is hopefully what you can expect in terms of converting pledges to donations. So that's super good. And are you guys seeing, because I'm not seeing the slides change? Are you guys seeing the slides change on the big screen?
Yes, we are.
Awesome. Okay.
Let me retry to share and then see if that helps. We had to do that last week, so.
Let me retry to share and then see if that helps. We had to do that last week, so.
You know what? It's, it's okay, Shannon, because I can just go to my slideshow and work that way. So don't worry about it for me. So where do we stand right now with Elevate? So let's talk about Elevate. So I've told you about Invest in Excellence over the years and what we've been able to achieve with parent partnership. I've talked about Rise Together. And the fact that we were able to build our elementary school, this beautiful building sooner than we otherwise would have. And with some amenities that probably we wouldn't have been able to do without our parents. So in, in 2019, we kicked off Elevate. And where that stands right now is we have about 1.5 million dollars in pledges. And with cash in hand on that of 1.1 million dollars. So again, that fraction, that ratio is super good. That campaign even prior to COVID has not, was not up to end yet. So we're doing super good on collection. I talked about this before a board meeting, so I won't dwell on it, but it, it is remarkable that we've been able to do that, especially in light of pandemic and economic impacts that families have had. So what have we been able to do with that 1.4, 1.5 million dollar commitment and that cash in hand of 1.1? We've, we've accomplished five out of our six objectives of this capital campaign. We've replaced our field, we've rubberized our track. We've remodeled our middle school to increase and expand our instructional spaces. And increase our security of our school, the middle school. We've built our press box. We've reconfigured and repaved our main campus drive and our special event slash middle school parking lot. So five of the six objectives are done and achieved. And we've got one more to go, and that's Knight Fieldhouse. And so I'm going to switch it up if I can to the timeline of what we're looking at now. So let's bring us up to present day. We're at present day. Now let's talk about what we're going to do in the near future. So I want the board to be aware that we are planning on this month and next, going out to a priority group of families. These are families of about 300 or 400. Who have shown us over the years that they are, they are top dogs, they are partners with us, they believe in LNC, they trust us. And these are folks who are either existing or former donors to Rise Together, or existing or former donors to Invest in Excellence and/or Elevate. So these families, we are going to go out to because we have ended that term nearly of when we asked them to get on board and to partner with us to elevate. We're coming to the close of that, what was supposed to be the end of that campaign before we heard of something called COVID-19. So we're going back to this priority group of families to see whether, hey, if your kids are in school, look what we've been able to do. We've achieved five of these six things. If you partner with us one more time, let's get to the end of this and get this last thing. So our Rise Together rock stars, our Elevate rock stars. Our field sports families who maybe haven't participated in any of those campaigns. However, their students are benefiting directly from. The upgrades that we've made. They're playing football, they're playing soccer on those fields, they're cheering on those fields. And so they're safer because of that rubber track. They're cross-country or track people, little lacrosse people. So those folks who maybe haven't had a chance to participate yet, we plan on going back out to them this month and next month. And then lastly, we have a group of employees who work at Wells Fargo, who Wells has an incredible program for matching. However, there is a very limited time throughout the year that we can, that their employees can get that match and we can receive that benefit. So those groups, we are proposing that we go back out to this month and next. And then come November, we would go, be going out to the balance of our families. To ask them for their support. Keep in mind, we have a lot of new families since we kicked off this campaign. And we have a lot of new families. Who haven't really been on campus to understand what our facilities are like and what those upgrades mean. So that is the plan for all of that. I'm going to turn it over if I can now to Matt and Scott because. That middle of that graph, when we start getting into March 3rd and June 1st, we're talking more about construction. But basically, what I told Shannon and Scott is that we think that we are going to know by late fall, early winter, whether or not we are going to be able to do this. And by the beginning of March, I feel like we are going to, to be able to say, hey, we're good. We may have some timing issues as our parents are converting pledges into donations, but we are good to go. And our Rise Together. And our part one of our Elevate campaign has demonstrated to our school leadership. That our parents are committed and they're keeping their promises at a very high level. So perhaps we'll be going back to the board come early winter to say, you know, we've got the commitment, we don't have the funds yet, but we feel confident that we're going to get the funds. Let's go ahead and move on this project and ask you guys to consider that at that point. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott and Matt. So they can talk about the June 1st, 2022 timing with construction.
So June 1st obviously would be the, thank you for that, by the way, Sarah. June 1st be the best case scenario to try to knock out some of that rough and tough kind of beginnings of construction, get that out of the way while the kids are away, while everybody's away. So we can kind of get past that. So once we come back, obviously, it won't be done. That construction project's going to be probably nine to 12 months, depending on supplies, weather, things of that nature. So if we can get that kind of rough stuff out of the way over the summer, it's going to make dealing with carpool during the rest of construction much smoother. Now, if for some reason that doesn't happen, we'll figure it out. We always have. We built phase three of the high school all the way through carpool and we just juggled it. We made it work. And as, as we all know, it was successful. So the ideal scenario would be June 1st. If not, we'll figure it out. We always do.
Sarah, would you like the next slide?
Yep.
There you go. Considerations are up.
Okay. Get to that on mine. All right. So one thing I just touched on a minute ago is my concern is that we have had a good number of our families who have. Heeded our call to partner with us to make this happen, to make the five out of the six things already happen. And I, and you know, they understand that, you know, this pandemic happened, nobody saw it coming, but I think that. You know, if we let, if we're not able to move on things as soon as we possibly can, what's going to happen is we're going to have families who are going to be graduating students. And so those that came out with us in good faith and, you know, considered our timeframe along with their own students and how they may be able to benefit from this directly. I fear that we're going to begin to lose those families if we're not able to move forward with construction, which is why I'm anxious to get started with this priority group this month and next, and then the greater balance of our families in November. We do have some issues with inspections and Scott can talk a little bit more about that. But basically, we, we've got some time. We have until December of 2022. So we've got nearly 18 months, but. If we miss that first inspection, and this doesn't mean the inspection that the final, you know, building is done and it's the final inspection, it's just. You know, getting something going and breaking ground to have the county come out and inspect it, that has to happen by 18 months, or it's going to trigger. Some things that we don't want to happen in terms of cost and redoing some architectural plans, which means that at that point, codes have changed in those two or three years since we initially designed the project. And we would be, we would be required to, to bring our plans and adjust our plans up to those codes. So we don't want that to have to happen. And, you know, again, I touched on a second ago, but this third bullet is, I think that it's very possible in the next three to four to five months, I'm going to be back to you and saying, hey, here's where we stand. Would the board consider and have the appetite to not necessarily fund the project, any parts of the project, but to float some of the project until. We have time for our parents to convert those promises to donations. Because we know from campaigns past. That especially when you're talking about a greater number, like the ask that is usually part of a capital campaign. Our parents, while some of them go ahead and ante all of that upfront, most will do this in monthly chunks. And so we need to have some months and some time, the gift of time for our families to have that opportunity to fulfill their promise.
Thanks, Sarah. This is Jared. I did want to just build off a couple of things that you said, just give the board a little more context too, as we kind of move forward. But for the board members who weren't with us when we kicked off Elevate, the first Elevate campaign, the Field House was part of that, the scope of that overall project. And, you know, as they laid out very well, COVID happened, there were a lot of concerns about the financial stress that might play, that might play from the families. And then the financials just supported us scaling back and not including the Field House initially. So this is kind of a refresh, a reinvigoration of that to get that done. But we had, we had made that commitment originally. So I think that's a good point that we don't want to lose family support who were kind of counting on that. At the time that they made those pledges and we made that commitment. So hence why we're moving forward. The other thing too is, is as we start to see what sort of response and commitment we get from the families, we'll continue to go through that same business case. And analysis process that we went through for the original Elevate campaign. We will work with Nicole, the finance committee, to put those things together so we can come back with a recommendation that makes sense, not just for the project itself, but financially for the school as well. So. Those are some things that are going to have to play out over time. We'll work on, on those and then come back to the board with the recommendations so we can make a decision. So with that, maybe unless Matt or Scott or Sarah have more, we could open up to any questions you guys have.
Jared, so just to sound clear, we have 1.4 in pledges, 1.1 in. Is the goal of Elevate, Elevate 2 to get to the 1.4 in hand, or do we have a new targeted?
Yep. Jared, do you want to take that or do you want me to?
Yeah, I think we're both going the same direction, but why don't, why don't you take a crack and then I'll, I'll, I'll add to it if I need to.
Yeah, great, great question, Greg. So we will get to the 1.4 and I say that with confidence because we're having people come on board with this every single week. So even though, you know, we may have some unfortunate situations where we may have a family here or there that pulls out, but that 1.4 I feel very confident about. The answer to your question is, we would be going for an additional sum of money. And that money, that amount of the money would be what the bid is for the Field House. Now, when we first did the bid a couple of years ago, prior to COVID, the bid was, came in just under a million dollars. It was the most expensive piece, an element of this entire capital campaign project. Now that COVID has happened and everybody knows what's happened with construction materials and prices since then. We had to redo that bid. So Scott did that a couple of months ago. And no surprise, that bid has gone up significantly up to, you know, 1.2 million. And I think if there's one thing that I have learned and that. Those of us who have worked on this type of a thing on the admin team, and I dare say that the board has probably learned in these construction projects is. The bid is often and not, not usually what the final price often is. And so I think it's better and more prudent for us to be thinking about more like 1.4, 1.5 million dollars. In my mind, we're going for another 1.5. So yeah, we're going for basically the same amount. That we've already raised nearly, the same amount in commitments that we already have, we're going for that same amount again in Elevate 2.0.
So hopefully that answered the question, Greg. It would be a new ask. Again, these commitments that we're making to move forward are contingent on the response in the fundraising. So if the community is willing to, to raise the funds. And, you know, again, I think the trends that, that Sarah has seen have been, I guess, more optimistic than we had thought. So given that and what we want to accomplish, we're going to go after this second, you know, 2.0 effort to raise those funds.
Hey, Sarah, this is Rick. Just wanted to clarify because you talked about the Wells Fargo match. So in these conversations that we're having in the fall, are we actually. Are we just collecting pledges or are we also trying to get donations?
So during the capital campaign, it's really both. It's really twofold. You're constantly promoting and trying to procure new pledges. But at the same time, you're converting the previous pledges and even the new pledges into the donation. So the answer is we would be doing both at the same time. And that would be no different than what we did in the first phase of Elevate as well as in Rise Together. I do want to point out one thing that may not be obvious to anyone except me who does this all of the time. It just dawned on me. Is we have not been able to fundraise in like a year and a half since all of this started. So, you know, we really had to put our fundraising efforts on ice. So the fact that we're at the 1.4, 1.0, I think it rounds up to 1.5. In promises is significant. So I know that it may seem like, you know, a significant thing, and it is. To go back out to our families and try to raise 100% more of what we've done so far, I do feel like it's doable. And I want the board to keep in mind that we've not been able to fundraise in 18 months. And yet still, here we are, both in this level of pledges. And still coming in even unsolicited, active solicitation is not happening. And during a pandemic, the promises are still being converted at a very high level to the donations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that covers everything. Again, we'll come back to the board in the future as we have more information. This is really just to give you guys some, some visibility into what we're working through. To move forward with this last piece of that original project that was in scope to finish out the, the activities in the fields and the Field House.
All right. Thank you, Elevate Committee. So next up, we have the new strategic committee that has yet to be named. One of these days, we will have a name for it.
We will, we will. I was hoping it would be by tonight, but Safe Schools derailed that a little bit. So. So to start off for our update, just to kind of, I guess, formally introduce the leadership team on the admin side, it's. Shannon Stein and Craig Smith. And from the board, it is myself, Jen Johnson and Elizabeth Timkovich. As far as subcommittees, due to the fact that this is a new committee with some, you know, startup goals. We have yet to identify other members who will be eventually joining us. That will come hopefully, you know, this next year as we start to build, build our committee. Our objective, and this might, in all fairness, this may be tweaked as we continue to meet one of our goals. Upcoming, which I'll talk about in a minute, is our mission statement. So as we kind of work through that. Like I said, this may tweak, but basically it's to help enrich the LNC students' overall experience in academics, leadership. And service while being mindful of their personal wellness with a goal of going above and beyond traditional academics to help our students develop into well-rounded. Community-minded young adults with leadership and other skills that can help them succeed in life and make positive impacts on their communities. So as we kind of previously discussed in updates, we have three things we're kind of working on right now. One of the first being our K through 12 and collegiate school research. Jen, Ms. Johnson has been doing a lot of work on that. It is kind of a short and a long-term goal. For the short term, we're going to be focusing on data collection, research. Possibly some field visits to other K through 12 or collegiate facilities. With the intention of taking what we learn, looking at how we could possibly apply it into LNC. And which would be like kind of our long-term goal for implementation. Our second goal is our Leadership in Action reboot. This is kind of a short-term goal, I would say, for the board. Leadership in Action before the pandemic was pretty much at the point where it was operationally sustaining itself. And of course, COVID hit, we took a pause on that. So for the next year or so. We'll be focusing on getting that rebooted, what that looks like. And then hopefully very soon, getting it to a point where. We're, we're back to what we originally envisioned. And then finally, our Day of Service. That again, short-term goal where one of those things where we get it up and running. We had one very successful one before the pandemic hit. We're looking for another successful one this year. And then once we kind of have one or two of those under our belts, then that can essentially be operationally sustaining itself. For our current month activities, we have completed the executive summaries that I talked about last meeting, or I'm sorry, the last regular meeting. For our Leadership in Action conversations and our alumni panel discussions, thank you to Jen and Elizabeth for putting those together. And not only did they do that, but they also drafted an initial mission statement and created a list of potential names for our committee. I think when I looked at it, it was a good like 15 or 20 options. So we are coming together as a committee. We had intended to do it. Before this board meeting, but again, Safe Schools kind of reared its ugly head this past month. So we have a committee meeting scheduled for the 25th of August. Where we will be discussing these executive summaries, kind of looking at the data and then hopefully flushing. where, um, we will be discussing these executive summaries, kind of looking at the data, um, and then, uh, hopefully fleshing out a mission statement and a name. And, um, um, and I kind of actually got ahead of myself, but, but, um, again, um, so finalizing the mission statement, analyzing, um, continuing to flush out our long-term goals as we kind of get started and especially with the K through 12 and collegiate, um, piece of this, uh, we, you know, as we kind of start to look at the data and kind of figure out a path forward, we can start to flush out some longer-term goals. Um, and then again, this month, continuing to plan for our day of service, which is scheduled for, um, October 29th. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions. Just look forward to hearing the new name.
I feel like, I hope it doesn't let anybody down. I'm sure it'll be fabulous, but I feel like it's been so built up.
So when we create next month's agenda, we can't spoil it on the, uh, the core agenda.
No, I'm going to have to have.
New strategic committee.
Yeah, I think I'm going to have to go over to the elementary school and have, um, Ms., um, Ms. Wickham, yeah, uh, create a, a presentation for us. So.
All right. Thanks, ladies. Sounds like some really great work. Um, look forward to continued progress there. All right. With that, we have run through our agenda in maybe near record time. Is there a motion to adjourn? This is Greg. I second. All right. My two colleagues to the left want to get out of here. All right. Any other questions, further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are adjourned.